Pleasant City Commission this Monday, August 12, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman is absent. Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Piersbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, since we have a quorum, we're going to continue. We're going to move into proclamations and presentations. First, we have two introductions for water plant operators. You two want to stand up? Hang on a second. I don't think his mic is on. Nope.
I guess you're gonna have to shout.
It's not on. Hang on a second.
No. No. Jason, what did you do to the mic?
Is there anything unplugged?
Unplugged, yeah.
Can I hear that?
All right. You hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Tonight, I'm glad to introduce our two newest water plant operators. First, we've got Jennifer Heitman, who joined our water plant team as an operator on July 21st. Jennifer has been with us since April as a seasonal employee for the Water Department. She comes to us from Morbart in Wind, Michigan, where she was a CNC machine operator. Prior to that, she was a machine operator for Hayworth in Big Rapids. Jennifer is a graduate of Mount Pleasant High School. Please join me in welcoming Jennifer to our team. And next, we have Nicholas Kuchek, who started as a plant operator on Monday, August 5th. He comes to us from North Baltimore, Ohio, where he was a feeder driver for UPS, delivering between major shipping hubs in the Great Lakes region. Prior to that, he was a hazardous materials transport driver for Keenan Advantage Group in Midland, Michigan. Nick is a graduate of Bay City High School in Bay City, Texas, and attended Delta College in Saginaw, Michigan, studying mechanical engineering. Please join me in welcoming Nick to our team.
All right, thank you, and welcome. Now, we're moving on to the presentation of the downtown Town Center Civic Space.
Nice. All right, well, good evening.
Good evening.
I have handwritten notes, so I'm getting my stuff all around here, okay. Well, I'm going to give you what is tonight, the final presentation on Town Center, because if you missed it, it opened to the public on Friday, so super excited about that. All right, just as a reminder, we reconstructed parking lot three, and we increased our green space by about four times the size. But we're going to go through sort of a recap of how we got to this point. So that's where we started. Let's see if this works according to plan. I'm going to take you through some sort of a modified timeline. Pardon, my thumb was in that picture, sorry, everyone. And then here is some pictures of what is eventually going to be our green space. So hydro seed went down last week. We have irrigation growing, so about six weeks from now, you'll see that lovely and green, along with close to, I believe it's 57 trees in all, ranging from maples and a variety of elms. Sort of giving you a little bit of the on-street parking, some of the amenities and the nice wide sidewalk, along with our new lighting.
Nice.
Flatbed of trees. And then here is the overall layout that I just wanted to touch base with real quick. Get my notes here. So as you know, we moved the parking lot westward over Moser Street. We gained a total of 25 parking spaces. Originally, we were thinking 18. I don't know how Stacy, our engineer, did it, but she counted us 25, so good job. We have, again, four times the amount of green space, which is going to be flexible areas for events and gatherings of all sizes. This space has universal accessibility for all ages and abilities by removing the curbs and adding wider sidewalks and seating areas. Of course, the addition of public restrooms that we hadn't had downtown in decades. 57 trees, and addition of sustainable and safety features such as EV chargers, water filling stations, and LED lights. Also, while increasing access to Riverview Apartments. So the project timeline. Most of this is behind us, but we're going to do a quick little recap for everyone who's watching tonight. Grand Administration, we started that in December. We sent the project out for bid in December. We reviewed and awarded the bid in February. We began in construction April 22nd. We completed the site on August 9th, except for the power, lights, and irrigation. So you might be thinking, well, why? There's what's called an MDP panel. I'm not going to try and explain electrical, trust me if you don't want that. But we are about three weeks from having that all on. But in the meantime, we have a generator going, handling the irrigation for us. Picnic tables are going to be installed at the end of August, and the restroom is expected to be completed at the end of September, when our back order on those fixtures will be done. So, a recap of funding. So, I really want to take a minute to go through how we came in on target on this project. Surveying and civil site engineering and design done by the engineering department. I cannot speak highly, any more highly than this evening. I just, the kudos all go for that team. It is really remarkable what they did. We had 3D renderings that was done by our planning department. We use local design consultants for the electrical and restroom building. Our electrical engineer, Clark Tromley-Randers, out of Mount Pleasant, our architect, WSG Architects out of Mount Pleasant, along with our city engineering team. We bid the construction project over two contracts to save on contractor markup. Our contractors, Malley Construction for the site work and Three Rivers Corporation for the restrooms. Construction site and building inspections were completed by staff. Grant and contract administration also completed by staff. And we are very pleased to say that we're on target. So some of the funding sources. 1.138060 ARPA funds, $1 million for the RAP grant. EVC Holdings, that was for those EV chargers, the equivalent was $115,500. The Mount Pleasant Area Convention Visitors Bureau gave us $50,000 for their destination grant. Mount Pleasant Area Community Foundation, $10,240. And Mishda's My Neighborhood Grant recently gave us $75,000 for site amenities. Other things. The Parks Department worked with the VFW, American Legion, and Rolling Thunder organizations to move the memorials to the north section of Island Park, which is adjacent to the Vietnam Memorial. In November, we discussed having our ceasing operations for Broadway Central. We relocated the flagpole to the Roundabout. And we communicated this in so many ways. I was hoping that at the end of this, no one would be like, hey, what's going on down there? I did have one comment, though, but they also told me they'd been out of town for a while, so I was going to chalk it up to that. So, do you have any questions now that we are basically at the tail end of this?
Vice Mayor?
Well, just one, without having my calculator out. Are we ahead of the game with all the different fundings that you listed? I didn't see a total for that.
I'm gonna, at this point in time, not everything is turned in. I'm going to say that we're on target. I'm not going to make any promises until the final bills and invoices come in.
Okay. Commissioner Bush?
Can you remind me, the bathrooms, are they going to be seasonal, like the park bathrooms? Are they going to be more year-round, and then what hours, and that sort of thing?
They're going to be year-round, but those hours, we're determining those right now. Phil and myself, we're trying to work through those. It's looking like we're going to keep those fairly consistent, open hours like we have at Island Park, but with some nuances, because we have more activities on weekends than we do during the week. So we're going to make some tweaks to that.
And that was part of my other question, then, so it's going to be a parks-managed bathroom?
Correct.
Perfect.
Commissioner Ake?
Okay. First of all, thank you for this update. And I am really, really happy to see it come to fruition and close to completion. So I want to say bravo to you for, you know, leading, you know, for working around this and for updating us. So I am happy to see this. I'm going to ask if it is possible to place somewhere on our webpage or Facebook, where people can see it, the funding sources. I want to explain why. Because I have been on a platform where people are chatting about money wastage. I don't think that people know exactly where, you know, all the sources for the funding. I don't think that people know exactly where, you know, all the sources for the funding, and clearly, we have not used any city general funds to support this particular project, or at least, you know, wasted any funds. So I do think that it is, you know, I know some people don't like the word transparency, but I think it's important for us to say, here are funding sources, and this is a great project that will benefit the city, and these are, you know, the organizations or units that have funded us.
Yes.
So if it's possible, just, you know.
It's already on our website, has been before the project started, and all...
Some people are not seeing it, because, you know, I haven't realized.
I have talked about the funding sources, as the saying goes, till I'm blue in the face. So they are on our website. All of the presentations we've done in the past, along with frequently asked questions, including those funding sources, are on our website. They have also been included in multiple social media posts. I've talked about it, I talked about it on the radio, talked about it on TV, talked about it on the Morning Sun, sort of skywriting and knocking on every single door. I'm not sure how we could have reached more people, but the reality is, there are some folks.
But this is the reality, people are talking, saying, it's, you know, I don't know how we highlight.
There's also confusion with the county. There was also confusion running up to the election, and I saw that. We tried to handle those questions as best we could, but we know that we couldn't catch them all. Right.
And lastly, I want to say thank you for, you know, placing the, relocating the Korean War Memorial in close proximity with, okay, thank you, just staff, you know, because it does make sense, sort of placing them in relation to one another, where people can visit all of them at the same time. So, good job.
Team effort from all, from every angle you could imagine, yes.
Thank you. City staff works. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Wingard.
Yeah, thank you to you and to the staff for the hard work put into that, into this. Only question I have, and again, not to be nitpicky, because we could probably ask questions all day and everything. New trees and everything going in?
Yes.
Care plan for them, as they're...
They're going to be on the schedule. The Streets Department, we're out last week, they use a GPS system, they mark out not only what the tree is, the age of the tree, and it goes into our system for continuous care, like we do all of our other street trees. Cool.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have one more question. You did, did I hear you correctly say that it was open to the public?
Yes. Not the green space, to be clear.
Okay, okay.
No, we have some caution tape around the green space. We'd like to have six weeks before anyone really walks on it. We're going to do our best for that, to give it the best chance of growing, but the lot was open actually roughly noon on Friday.
Okay.
And it was used within a, just an hour or so, actually. It was fine.
Okay, good.
Yes. You had mentioned in communication to downtown residents and businesses that it is not currently available for overnight parking.
Correct.
Is that going to change in the future, or is that...
Don't believe so, no.
Gotcha.
No. And the reasoning behind that, one, well, the primary reason is actually, because it is going to be an event space so often, we don't want people to have to worry about where to park overnight. We have plenty of options for overnight parking, so we just went, we're going to make that change now, and then that way, when there's events, it just makes it easier that when we have to...
People aren't in the habit of leaving their car overnight.
Correct.
As someone who has done that before, and had to get out of the farmer's market the next day to go up north, it was the whole time, so yeah, and I think that's probably a smart decision there, thank you.
Any other questions?
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, we're going to move on to the presentation of community services. Manager Dissence, you want to set this up?
With the esteemed pleasure of hosting an intern, that is Mr. Mason Squillet-Petersen, who had worked with us on developing, distributing, and analyzing a climate change vulnerability survey. So Mason is here to present to the City Commission on the findings of this project. With that, I am going to turn it over to Mason, once we have the microphone working.
There you go.
All right, hello.
Hello.
My name is Mason. I was an intern here for the summer. I was actually an intern last year for energy efficiency, but this year was for more climate change related stuff, and I had to make a survey for people to take, so we can get some data on how people in Mount Pleasant feel about climate change. And so, we're going to go over the risk assessment report, what that is real quick, and then some of the vulnerabilities that Mount Pleasant will face, or will be likely to face, from climate change, and then the second, or the last part's going to be about the actual survey itself. And so, what I had wrote up for my internship was this vulnerability and risk assessment. It's going to go in the Mount Pleasant Climate Change Preparedness Plan. The vulnerability section is a brief overview of the environmental and public health impacts from climate change. Most of this information was already presented to the City Commission by the class of Dr. Matt Leish, I believe, in December. So, we're going to briefly cover that, so not a real intensive on that one. Then the second part's going to be the risk assessment section, and that's the results of the survey. Survey was open from June 11th to July 3rd, and it had 371 responses. So, the vulnerability section, and I'm going to go a little quick, if I can, because you guys already seen most of this. Michigan has warmed 2 to 3 degrees Fahrenheit over the last century. That doesn't look like a lot, but that those small increment changes do have massive impacts in the big picture, and so that means there's going to be higher average temperatures and more extreme heat events, and that's going to change the season lengths, and the season lengths are going to obviously mess with plants and animals, and also, I didn't put the point down there, but it will potentially impact insect populations. You could get more mosquitoes and ticks, or depending on how much rain and how hot it is, we could impact the native insect populations, especially crucial pollinators. It's going to be increased heat wave likelihood, and there's different measurements for what a heat wave is. I went with the two or more consecutive days over 90 degrees Fahrenheit, sometimes it's three or more, sometimes it's 95 degrees, depending where you're at. So that really changes where you're at in the United States. It's a public health concern, obviously, especially with high humidity, and there's going to be increased demand for energy to cool buildings in this, when this happens. And I put that chart on there, that was from the presentation. This just shows that the last spring freeze dates are going earlier in the year. That means it's warming earlier in the year, and so winter is getting shorter, summer is getting longer, so there is a data that shows that we are having earlier last spring events. Droughts are going to be less likely to impact Mount Pleasant, but I would say we could be more resilient to, we should be more resilient to them, should they happen, because there's going to be an overall increase in precipitation over the next century, but there's going to be irregular weather, is, well, irregular weather is predicted, and the climate change could lengthen the time between these rain events. And also, this graph shows that water usage in Mount Pleasant is trending upwards, and so that means we are, if we can, sorry, my notes are not on here, I had other notes about the water usage, but it just means that we're not as resilient. So the negative impacts of droughts, when they do occur, obviously, it's going to stress the water supply meant for human use, harm plants, animals, and soil, and it's going to increase the wildfire risk. Also, this is where I'd like to mention that even though some of these hazards and vulnerabilities might not happen here, should they happen elsewhere, it can impact us here. So, last year, if you remember, the Canadian wildfires were impacting our air quality here, and actually, there was a day where Detroit had some of the worst air quality in the world. And so, that's just an example of, even if a drought were to start a wildfire, or increase the likelihood of a wildfire somewhere else, that could even impact us here. So, if droughts are not going to impact us right here, we still might feel that. Vulnerabilities with storms, extreme weather in Michigan is expected to increase, also with more rain, more hail, more snowstorms, et cetera. Extreme thunderstorms are going to, are likely to increase, and then strong winds can create hazardous conditions, damage property, and cause power outages. And also, there is the unknown impact of climate change on tornadoes. Tornadoes are a fairly complex weather phenomenon, and so we, scientists are still not sure how climate change will impact that. They don't know if it's going to move tornado alley, they don't know if it's going to change where the, how intense the tornadoes are, so it's just got to be prepared for a lot of unknowns with things like that. And this chart that, it shows that there is an overall increase in just the amount of precipitation in different metrics. Total precipitation on the heaviest 1% of days is 45% increase. Five-year maximum daily precipitation is 11% increase. An annual maximum daily precipitation is 10% increase. So we're probably going to get more rain, more precipitation events. And the last vulnerability I'd like to cover in this is, with more extreme precipitation, you have inadequate stormwater infrastructure and the lack of green spaces increases your likelihood of flooding in Mount Pleasant. Intense flooding is obviously dangerous to people, damages property, restricts travel, spreads hazardous chemicals, debris, and pathogens, and increases riverbank and soil erosion. And that picture's just from Island Park, from the big flood that happened in 2017, and so, we're looking at potentially like one-in-10-year floods, one-in-25-year floods, one-in-50-year floods, becoming one-in-five-year floods. One in, these big flood events do become more likely, with more rain, and if we are not managing our stormwater infrastructure well enough, it just increases the likelihood. And so, some of the most vulnerable groups to all of these vulnerabilities is going to be unhoused people, children and older adults, workers and outdoor occupations, low-income people, pregnant and postpartum women, indigenous communities, and people with chronic medical conditions and disabilities. And this is information that's from the EPA and the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, so they have a lot of research that goes into how climate change is going to negatively impact these groups, and these are groups that Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant has all of these groups, so it's, we got to keep that in mind. And so now, we're going to go to the actual survey part of my work, and so for the demographics, like I said earlier, there's 371 responses, 256 of which live within the city of Mount Pleasant, and 115 live without. Most common townships outside of the city were Union Township with 45 respondents and Deerfield Township with 18 respondents. Most of the other townships in Isabella County did get hit, except for two of them, but they were a lot lower amount of respondents compared to Union and Deerfield. As far as age goes, it's a relatively normal bell curve distribution, but overall, there was more people 35 and older that took the survey, and then there were 35 and under. Continuing on demographics for rates and ethnic background, there's 360 responses for this one. This is only because I made it optional, in case someone did not feel comfortable answering this, and also, they were allowed to select multiple for this, so there is overlap in it, but it's overlap in what people selected for this, but it's not reflected on the slide. So, but that means at least 319 people selected white, 14 selected American Indian or Alaskan Native, 12 selected Latino, Latina, or Hispanic, 6 selected multiracial, 4 selected Black or African-American, 3 selected Other, 1 selected Asian, and 1 selected Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander. These are, these numbers are slightly disproportionate to the actual demographic makeup of Mount Pleasant or Isabella County, and this graph is actually from Isabella County. There was slightly more white representation in the survey than there are the actual reality in the county, and there was slightly lower non-white respondents compared to the actual makeup of the county. And then, next, it's going to go into the concerns. People were asked, on a scale of 1 to 10, how much of a priority should the world have for climate change? And I would say, based on the number of people, the average was 7.13, so that means there's a somewhat high to higher priority for climate change. 144 responses rated at 10, which, that was the most, that, most people who selected the, rated at 10, sorry. And then the second one was 1, with 47 respondents. 71, 71% of the responses were between 6 and 10, while only 29% were between 1 and 5. This is just a long way of saying that people say we should have a high priority for climate change. And so then, they were also able to rate their level of concern for various vulnerabilities and hazards. Some of this is based on from the vulnerabilities presentation, and also, I included a bit more, just from other research. And the percentages on there are a combination of the very concerned and extremely concerned, and it goes in order of utility cost at 61%, but a lot of people are concerned about utility costs with climate change. Second is water pollution at 48%, ecosystem disturbances at 44%, uncharacteristic weather conditions at 39%, and crop and garden failures at 37%. And then, I say these are lesser concerns, because I wouldn't say people are not concerned about them, but they just didn't have as higher of the very or extremely concerned, and that would go in order with, oh, and also, the percentages are combining the not concerned with the slightly concerned. So overall, the one that comes, with the least concern is wildfires at 64%, water scarcity at 54%, severe snowstorms at 53%, and droughts at 52%. Other concerns, and I put these on here, they don't really fall into the lesser concern or the most concern, but they are also, they have important data on it. Flooding had a, one of the high, actually flooding had the highest moderately concerned of all of the hazards or vulnerabilities. Heavy rain and severe thunderstorms had the second highest moderate concern, and then heat waves, insect-borne diseases, and air quality are all relatively even distribution among all of the levels of concern. And so, the next section in the survey was about the impact of climate change, and they were given some statements to look at, and then they were asked on how much they agree with these statements, and they could be strongly agree, disagree, neutral, agree, or strongly agree. And so for climate changes impacting people in the United States, 13% agreed and 56% strongly agreed. And then for climate changes impacting me personally, 33% agreed and 26% strongly agreed. And so that is, both of those have a strong majority of people that think the US is being impacted by climate change, and that they are feeling personal impacts from it. This one has a little bit different of what people, they, how they agree with it, that for infrastructures like roads, bridges, and storm sewers in Mount Pleasant can withstand extreme weather conditions, 35% were neutral, and 33% disagreed with that. For the city of Mount Pleasant is doing enough to address the hazards of climate change, 44% were neutral and 27% disagreed with that.
Wow.
I would say those are things that you'd want people to be more in agreement with. You'd want to show that we are making progress towards being more resilient to climate change, but this could show that people are not really confident either in our infrastructure to handle it, or that they don't know that we are doing stuff to address the impacts of climate change. So the next one is, local governments must play a role in addressing climate change. 21% agreed and 46% strongly agreed. I want to say, I added a section where they could put their opinion on this for the federal government and state government, they're all pretty much the same. They, people think that all levels of government should be doing something to address climate change. And then for, I can play a role in addressing climate change, 37% agreed and 35% strongly agreed. And I think this one is important, because it shows that the majority of people that took the survey are, could at least be motivated, or they are already on board with making sustainable changes that we need to make as individuals. Now, the thing is, individuals are not the cause of climate change. That is fossil fuel industries, that's corporations, that's the military, all of those require big policy change to address the causes of human-caused climate change, but we as individuals have to become more sustainable, because Americans live very unsustainable lives already compared to the rest of the world. So there are things that even though we are not the root cause of human-caused climate change, we can make it better by making sustainable changes, and this shows that people are potentially motivated to do that already. The last section is about community resilience, and most respondents have some kind of air conditioning in their home, and that was 92% or 344, 343 respondents, sorry. And then most respondents have some kind of homeowner's insurance, which is 85% or 315 respondents, and in order of what is covered most by those is fire damage, storm damage, water damage, and flood damage. I put these in the survey, because these are some of the ways that people will be able to be more resilient to the impacts of climate change, should they happen. Like I said, if extreme heat is going to become an issue, and if there's more heat waves, one of the only ways, especially if you get high humidity, is to escape that heat, is to have air conditioning in your home. Like, it will get to a point, if you have high humidity and high heat, where even shade does not help, you need actual air conditioning to cool the area. And also for homeowner's insurance, that's just another way for people to be resilient to damages to their property should a disaster happen, unfortunately. And then respondents ranked the following for how important they should be for the city when addressing the impacts of climate change. Number one was public health. Number two was environmental health. Number three was infrastructure. Number four was the economy. And number five was climate change education. And then the final question allowed for comments, and it was also optional, so there was only 101 responses. I'm not going to go into like individual comments, but they covered, a good chunk of them from different respondents, covered the importance of green spaces, renewable energy transition, drinking water and Triple River quality, regulating businesses and big polluters in Mount Pleasant, protecting and protecting vulnerable communities. And then also, in my report, I added just a little bit of comparison with bigger studies from, that have statistics on the state as a whole and the country as a whole, and so annual reports from Yale and George Mason University. And so annual reports from Yale and George Mason University estimate that 70% of Americans believe global warming is happening, while 13% do not believe it is happening. Further, 59% of people of Mount Pleasant respondents believe that they are personally being impacted by climate change, which is higher than the amount for Michigan as a whole, which is 42%. And then 67% of Mount Pleasant respondents agree or strongly agree that local governments must play a role in addressing climate change, while 55% of people in Michigan think that local officials should do more to address climate change. And then, I guess, any questions?
Commissioner Wingard?
Yeah, so first off, I just want to say thank you for coming back and continuing to work with us, Mason. I really appreciate that. Yeah, as you've pointed out, I would like to also say thank you for not pulling your punches on a lot of the information you're showing here. I think there's a lot of motivation when talking about climate change to like reduce down, but especially when we take the long-term look, we're looking at impacts that are, at this point today, we're looking at lessening the impacts and adapting to what these changes are going to be. So I really appreciate the viewpoint that you're bringing there. My, going into questions, my first question, again, I don't know if you'll be back for another internship or anything, so kind of just getting a bit of parting thoughts from you, potentially. Hopefully you come back or we can see you again in the future. But challenges moving forward, like as we're developing our climate change preparedness plan, just kind of your thoughts and takeaways as we're doing this work?
Well, one would be funding. People are just not going to want to fund things because they don't see the immediate financial gain of making these sustainable changes. That's a big one. Let's see. Oh, I, it's not really like a challenge, but it's something that I've noticed. I think it is better to phrase and shape a lot of the stuff under the realm of sustainability as opposed to climate change or addressing climate change. Because you can address, you can address climate change under sustainability. Sustainability is much more holistic, you can cover a lot more things, but also it's less politically polarizing. A lot of people, when they hear sustainability, they might have maybe more positive association with it, but then you do have a good chunk of people who, if they hear climate change, I'm not saying it's the majority, based on the survey results, I would not say it's the majority, but a good chunk of people would hear climate change and then immediately be turned off from doing any sort of changing or any sort of like addressing how we can lessen the impacts of climate change. So it's not really like a challenge, but more so, I would say, keep in mind sustainability as a concept more to kind of, for lack of a better way of phrasing it, to launder climate change in it, you know? It just makes it more digestible for people, I think.
Commissioner Bush?
Actually, he kind of already covered something, so I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Eke?
Okay, thank you for this comprehensive, you know, presentation update. It is important. Climate change, the impact of climate change has been in the news. If you've been listening to NPR lately, this past week, in fact, for the past two weeks. Okay, so, and I noticed that you talk about some of those issues. In fact, today, they were talking about, you know, sustainable green spaces, you know? So what, you know, can communities do? And I'm asking you this because part of your survey indicates that there are people who are committed or at least interested in this, you know, doing something. Based on your research, and, you know, clearly you've spent some time working on this, and think about other models or prototypes elsewhere in other communities, what can communities here do, you know, to assist? We do know that there is a group here that is interested in environmental and climate issues, but what about ordinary people, residents? What are some of the things they can do? You know, how can they monitor their carbon footprint? Because I think that's where you were getting to at some point. You know, what are some of the things, you know, very simple, basic things that they can do to help mitigate, you know, the impact of climate change? I have a second question, but let's go with this one first.
So, I mean, it's kind of a big question. There's a lot of things. I would say as far as what the city could do, even more opportunities to educate people on how they can be more sustainable, what the city is doing to promote sustainability and how it's addressing climate change. Like, for example, the green space, say, yes, it's aesthetically pleasing, it looks nice, it's a, we, it's a real nice new addition or update really to the, to the city, but then mention how the green space is good for the environment. It helps filter pollutants through the, through the ground as the water goes to the ground. It helps replenish the groundwater. And like I said, with flooding, it helps mitigate flooding naturally. For like...
Residents?
Residents, yeah. So there's different things with that. You can tackle either your greenhouse gas emissions or how you're living or how sustainable you live your life. With greenhouse gas emissions, most, most people's greenhouse gas emissions in this country come from transportation. And that's actually one of the biggest greenhouse gas emitters overall from the country, aside from industry. So if you can, yeah, just, transportation is one. Just finding more ways to live sustainable, any, like having your own garden, finding ways to increase community solar. People, it is expensive still, but if Mount Pleasant could figure out a way to make that cheaper or more financially viable for more people, that would be really great. EVs, they're not the, they're not the savior of climate change, they cause problems elsewhere, especially with the mining for the lithium and the batteries that's required for those. It's, but we are, we are changing where these issues are coming from, and also there's greenhouse gas emissions that come with the production of these EVs. So like, there's give and take, we have to make certain changes and transition. That's why I said the renewable energy transition in that last slide, because even, even though fossil fuels are the issue, it's not going to be overnight that we can change it. Our infrastructure is reliant on it, our manufacturing goods are reliant on the fossil fuel industry. So it's not just going to go away overnight, it's going to be a transition to be more, with, have more renewable energy. And so I feel like as the country, as we, as we go throughout, dealing with climate change as a country, and that's going to depend on the administration, whoever's elected, on how much is funding this renewable energy transition. But overall, I think it's just going to take time for it to be more available for people. And especially, your energy companies are going to see that it's going to be more sustainable for them to do these transitions to renewable energy. It's just unfortunate that it's going to take so much time because it's so much damage has been done and will continue to be done until then. So I guess, I try to answer your question, it's, that's a tough one because there's a lot with that.
Yeah, I realize that, and I appreciate your answer. You've addressed some of these, you know, these, the examples you've given are important. The other piece that I have has to do with the demographics. You know, you indicated somewhere, and I hope I heard you correctly, in terms of the demographics that responded, you said that the, my note just simply says the non-white, you know, demographic responses seem not to align with the percentage of, you know, am I, am I correct in what I'm hearing?
So it's relatively disproportionate to what the actual demographics are. Overall, it was slightly more percentage of white respondents and then slightly lower percentage of non-white respondents. So it's, they were, as for the, the white respondents, it was only a couple percentages, but it was much, since it was only like one, let's just go back, take a look at that real quick. So like, someone had selected one for Asian. And since this was open to the rest of Isabella County, Isabella County's Asian, non-Hispanic population makes up 1.4%. The one out of the 360 responses that I got is less than that 1.47%, so yeah, it was a lot lower percentage of that, of that representation for that community.
So here, this is where the professor in me sort of, sort of kicks in. Okay, so looking at that, and in terms of your analysis, what, you know, what's going on in your head? How are you interpreting this discordance, you know, in terms of the actual percentages of people and the percentages of the respondents? What is it, what is this telling you? What's going on? Just analyze this, sort of interpret this for me just very briefly, because I'm thinking, what's going on here?
Yeah, so I think there could be a couple of different things that play into that. One, the first one I'd like to go in, go into, I did table a little bit at the farmer's market, and so that could skew how many people were represented in the, in the survey, because you have people from outside of Isabella County even coming, but I didn't, actually, no, I didn't survey them. But if you have people from outside of Union Township or like far townships from the city of Mount Pleasant that are probably, most likely majority, if not all, white, come into this farmer's market, and then I get them in there, so there's, you have more white people coming to the farmer's market than that can potentially skew it, that I think that could be it. Another one is, you do have survey non-response just from people in general, but also, I, actually, I tried to look it up, there is potentially a correlation with non-white, people who are not white not taking surveys, especially from the city government like this, you have people that would not trust the city government or anything like that. I would say those would probably be the two biggest for why.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good, that's good, because I was wondering about that. I just needed to hear your interpretation or understanding, you know, representation of what's going on here. So thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mason. We appreciate your time.
Excellent work. Thank you.
Right, at this time, we're going to go into public input on agenda items. Now, we do have, I believe, four items that we will be considering for public hearing later this month and early in September. The public input is when you are allowed to come to the podium. This is on agenda items only. You are given five minutes, you'll be asked to state your name and address. If you are watching us from Zoom or joining us on Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. It was brought to my attention, and I had been wondering about this, is every time we do this, I ask if there's any emails, and we've not had any email comments in a very long time. So I wanted to remind people that you can email commission@mt-pleasant.org or, what?
Yes, comment.
Yeah, well, there's the commission, and then there's comment@mt-pleasant.org. Now, if you email the comment, please specify if it's going to the city commission, the planning commission, or the zoning board of appeals. And those, if they are received early enough, they will be sent to each commissioner, or if they're not received early enough, they will be read at the public input. Is there anyone on Zoom tonight that wishes to speak? Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak in the audience? Okay, then I'm going to close public comment at this time, and we're going to move on to receipt of petitions and communications. Manager dissons.
Received petitions and communications this evening includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received and the minutes from the traffic control committee from March.
Okay, so I'm just noticing something. There is no line item in here to approve the agenda as presented. So I, it's just, it's a glitch, it happens. I'm going to ask that the commission look over the agenda, see if there is any changes or additions or deletions to the agenda. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Eke, a second by Commissioner Rollins. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, now we're going to move into the rest of the agenda. We're going to move into consent items. Are there any consent items that the commission would like moved into the regular meeting? Seeing none, manager dissons.
Thank you. Consent items this evening includes the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held July 22, 2024, acceptance of funding from Union Charter Township for North section of the Mid-Michigan GKB pathway, consider approval of purchase of Neptune 360 AMR software and equipment for a cost not to exceed $31,467, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve the consent items.
I move that we approve the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'm going to say Commissioner Wingard was the second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, motion carried. We do not have any public hearings, so we're going to move into new business. Our first new business is to consider an extension of month-to-month agreement lease. Manager dissons.
So the city leases part of the former Mount Center, Mount Pleasant Center property to Mr. Robert Lee Irvin for the purposes of farming. The lease has been in place well before the city's ownership of the property in 2011. The Irvin family actually used to lease the property from the state back when they owned the property. The lease that is with Mr. Irvin allows the farming of roughly 102 acres of the property as shown in Exhibit A of the First Amendment of the agreement, which you'll find in your city commission packet, essentially the northernmost 102 acres on the property, roughly. The cost for this lease is $1,311.55 that's paid monthly to the city. This is the same rate that has been in place since 2012. It's worth noting that this lease amount is higher than what the average lease amount is according to the USDA as they publish the average leases on a per-county basis across every state. The question before the city commission this evening is if we want to extend the lease. Mr. Irvin has indicated his interest in doing so. If so, I propose that the lease term be kept in short-term duration, allowing the city flexibility with future use of the property. In your city commission packet is a proposed lease extension, which would grant Mr. Irvin the ability to continue farming from now until the end of 2025. The city would still retain a right to cancellation within a 90-day advance notice, and this could be done at no cost to the city.
Okay. Commission, are there any clarifications needed? Commissioner Wingard?
Yeah, question I had, and this was, so this was first brought to your attention recently, there was a public comment concerning this, this area specifically. I believe it's item 5.5 in the lease. The line goes into soil testing shall be done each year, and if limiting is required, the tenant shall do so at on expense. They had mentioned that, like, at that time, the public comment had mentioned that no testing had been done or provided to the city. And I just want to clarify, either clarify that or just elaborate upon that, just like what the situation for that looks like.
Yes, Steph looked through the records, and going as far back as we could, we didn't see where that had necessarily been provided. So it could just be, to be honest with you, administrative oversight. In connection with Mr. Irvin, he said he's more than happy to provide that kind of information going into the future. And so in your city commission packets, you should find the testing for both the soil as well as the particular agents utilized for farming included with that information as well, too.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Eke?
So I'm glad that Commissioner Wingard, you know, brought this up, because I recall this particular, you know, issue several months ago. So since we do have the right of cancellation at some point, I'm going to ask so that if, should that testing not take place, that would be grounds for canceling, you know, the lease. Am I correct?
Yeah, it could be.
You know, is it, okay, just so that, you know, Mr. Irvin understands that, that this is part of the condition for approving the lease or not approving the lease.
Commissioner Bush?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I just want to make sure that this is the line in the lease that says the, the data from testing will be, will be provided upon request, right? So I thought, unless I'm reading the wrong part, but that it's, which I'm not on that page, but that's what I remember from reading it, that it was by request.
You might be right.
It just says, a copy of the soil test results and recommendations shall be sent to the landlord.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll read through it again at a different time, but I do believe that there was a line about upon request.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Eke?
Okay, so to sort of make this, you know, uncomplicate this issue as opposed to upon request, perhaps we need to stipulate that this has to happen and give a particular time within which this can happen so that the person, you know.
Following along with what I'm saying, sorry.
As opposed to saying upon request, you know, which might cause problems where, given how busy the city admin, you know, city staff can get, you might forget. On the other hand, if a stipulated time is given, you know, for submitting.
I maybe, I might have been incorrect.
I'm just simply saying, clarify that. Even, you know, I mean, this document is not, you know, you've got to scroll down. But so clarify it and say, within this particular timeframe, on the, upon this particular date, by this date, we want to see this, you know, submit this. You know, agencies do that, right? You know, licensing organizations or agencies do that and say to you, it's like your taxes. You don't file by this particular date. Hey, here it is. You need to file by this particular date. So and I think then it gives Mr. Irvin a particular time within which, a particular date within which he has to submit this. And it also says to the city, you know, this comes in by this particular date, as opposed to this very fluid, you know, if there is fluid language here that says upon request. Upon request by whom? Landlord, yes, maybe landlord forgets. And Mr. Irvin says, nobody asked me. I'm just simply saying, let's clarify the date.
Yep, certainly a possibility. Section 55 of the initial agreement does state that the soil testing shall be done each year, and essentially that has to be sent to the landlord. And then with regard to any of the chemicals or herbicides used on the ground, that the record of such shall be delivered to the landlord on a quarterly basis.
But no dates. I'm asking for quarterly. What does quarterly mean? Is it February, end of February, end of March, end of April, end of, you know, so what quarterly are we using fiscal year quarterly? Or, you know, Gregorian calendar or Sisik, you know, Julian calendar? I don't know. So that's what I'm trying to clarify here, right? Does that make sense?
That makes sense. Yeah, I can certainly communicate back to Mr. Irvin. I think it would make sense. We're in a calendar year, fiscal year, it would make sense that we just ask for that to be delivered on a quarterly basis for a calendar year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's going to be any issue on Mr. Irvin's part at all.
Yeah, good. It just makes everybody's life less complicated. Thank you.
All right, are there any other comments, clarifications? It sounds like we are requesting that it be added, that it be to list what the quarterly timeframe is.
Can do. If the city commission is good with calendar, I can make sure then that, and if, if that is something that you want to see in the amendment, that can always be added to the amendment as well, too. So we do have an amendment available. If the city commission is good approving that, we could approve the amendment with an amendment that the calendar, that the quarterly herbicide chemical reports be provided on a calendar year quarterly basis.
Yes, please.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Bush?
Who on the city staff would review these types of report documents? And are there other similar documents that the city receives that have this type of reporting information?
This is the only farmland that we lease, so this would be the only documents of that sort of a nature, if that answers the second part of your question, as far as who this would be addressed to. As of right now, I'm working directly with Mr. Irvin. That could change, just depending on who it's assigned to in the future.
Well, constituent constituent says, well, what do the reports say? I don't know. I mean, we have, we got them, but do they, like, I, I mean, I, I know that, you know, one of the benefits of having a tenant for so long is that you do have individuals really invested in, you know, the maintenance of the property. But, and so I'm sure that any, any issues would raise a red flag to Mr. Irvin. But just so that we can be accountable, we have constituents asking for this reporting. Who's looking at it other than we have it?
Yep. That's a good point. But at the same point, there's no one on staff that is a farmer who quarterly knows a lot about the information that comes her way. So when certain chemicals or pesticides are recorded on there, we've talked about the complex nature of naming native grasses according to Latin names. Some of that might as well be in Latin for the staff as well, too. So I do have to plead some ignorance there that we just don't have anyone on staff that possesses that knowledge that could adequately read these reports, or even in terms of amounts or anything like that.
I suppose if we had concerns, I mean, maybe this could be brought to like the Isabella County Extension Office or something like that.
Or even, you know, MSU Extension Office.
That's what I was, yeah.
Isabella County Extension.
Yeah, that's a very good point. I think we've got resources out there that we can tap into.
Yes, Commissioner Wingard?
I think as far as like, like, correct me if I'm wrong, if everyone's in agreement and everything. But as far as we, it's stipulated in here getting a report yearly and then some, and then additional reports quarterly. I think I would feel comfortable probably leaving that up to like staff administration on like making sure those are secured versus like having a specific date. I imagine that because also, again, like best time to take these reports, is it better to take these reports in the springtime versus in the, like, at the end of the harvest season?
That's a good point.
So that's where, again, we're getting into things where it's like, we, we might not have the best knowledge on hand. Because I mean, like, it would make sense to me, like pesticides are sprayed during the year, and then we'd want to sample them at the end of the year versus at the beginning of the year. But then again, I'm not a farmer. I've not studied agriculture or anything. As long as we're getting the reports, like, that, that's the key bit for me, I think, is just like, again, addressing that concern so that they are reviewable. So someone at the public or someone at the city staff could raise issues about them. I, I would feel comfortable with that of just, rather than making the amendments, leaving it to like staff and administration to like make sure those reports are obtained. So am I making sense to the rest of the commission?
Yeah.
But I'm not, what I'm asking is to clarify the timeframe for when we get the reports. I want to see the reports. We want to see the reports. We want to make sure we are accountable. We want to make sure that Mr. Irvin is also accountable because we're dealing with, you know, we've been talking about chemicals, we've been talking about a whole range of chemicals, including PFAS, God knows what else is in the soil. So we want the reports. What I'm simply asking is to make it, to clarify the timeframe within which, you know, the reports come in. If it's, you want the spring, go ahead for the spring, but clarify, provide Mr. Irvin some timeframe. You know, if you say quarterly, what do you mean by quarterly? For me, that's abequus. So quarterly based on what? All right? So clarify that. We get the report. He knows when to submit the report. We know when to expect the report. If we have to consult some other agency to read the report for us and explain things for us, then that's, you know, a different conversation. It's not his responsibility. That would be us doing that consultation.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that there's concerns over whether or not asking for a calendar quarterly report from Mr. Irvin, if that would be confusing to him based on his schedule and farming. When we look at quarterly, the quarter, the quarters would fall within areas of planting and placing product on the, on the ground. I think that if we, if we do a calendar quarterly and we give a rough estimate, let's see. So the first quarter would end in April. So we say be somewhere within the 15 days of the end of April. That, you know, depending on, because sometimes it's a late season for plant because of the rain, and sometimes it's an early season for plant because of the warmer weather. And so I think that if we give it a calendar quarter and give him the ability to do it within 15 days of that quarter, either early or after, that gives him enough leeway. If he has issues with it, that would be something, you know, saying, I can't do this yet because of this, he could talk to staff, yes.
I'm com, I'm comfortable with that. He can, it, it, you know, I don't want this to be contentious. All right? I, you know, we want to create, you know, make it possible for him to do what he needs to do. We get the information we want, you know, he can negotiate the timeframe or, you know, with, you know, the, the city manager. If he can't do it, as you're saying, talk to the city manager, but let him work it out, right? You know, and that, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I do not want this to be a very contentious matter. There's no need for it.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
My, my only comment is, we've had contracts with him for years and it appears he's been a good client. So I'm not assuming that we need to micromanage.
Well, it's not micromanaging. We need information that we say we, you know, this has to happen. And given the question that was raised by somebody several months ago who said, I haven't seen this test. I think I'm, that's, you know, am I recalling this correctly? So in a way, that person was trying to hold us accountable. Now we need to be accountable. If somebody comes in the future and says, where are these tests? Where is this documentation? What are we going to say? Say we didn't do it? That's where I'm going with this. I think the manager, the city manager can work out, you know, those pieces, you know, with.
All right, so I'm going to move to motion. I'm going to motion that we, that we create the extension of a month-to-month agreement lease with Robert Lee Irvin, that we, with the amendment of quarterly based on a yearly quarterly calendar.
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to consider the approval of a purchase of a 2024 Ford F-150. Manager dissons.
Steph is requesting the approval to purchase two vehicle replacements. The first is a replacement truck to be used in the water department. This purchase will use the MIDL contract, which allows the city to purchase vehicles at a great discount compared to other retail markets. The second request is the purchase of a Ram ProMaster van. MIDL pricing for a new van exceeds the city's initial budget for this vehicle. Steph is asking that the city commission authorize up to $54,000, which is the budgeted amount, on a dealer stock van to be determined. Director of Public Works Jason Moore is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the proposal.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a feeling I know what Commissioner Chapman would ask in this situation. So is it within the budget to do so?
You're going to have to use the, um, there you go.
We're actually increasing the budget slightly to cover the van. It's a change and we're not just ordering another truck like we usually do. And so there is a slight increase there. And so that's part of this ask.
Any other questions?
I'm going to assume that this is urgent.
Yeah, the oldest truck, oldest trucks in our fleet, and so, yeah, it's pretty important.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Thanks. Entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the purchase of a 2024 Ford F-150 pickup truck with MIDL and not to exceed $42,000, and a Ram ProMaster work van from dealer stock not to exceed $54,000.
Is there a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to consider a per-hour contract with Blystone and Bailey CPAs. Manager dissons.
So due to an unexpected vacancy in the treasurer's office, staff is requesting authorization to engage in the services of a third-party accounting firm to assist with routine accounting tasks. In the interest of time, staff requested proposals from two firms, local firm Blystone and Bailey, and also a firm Manor Custerison, which is out of Lansing. Blystone and Bailey provided the lower per-hour cost, and they have a great reputation. Staff requests that the city commission authorize staff to utilize the services of Blystone and Bailey on an as-needed basis. Funds are available due to the position vacancy. A budget amendment is not needed at this time. However, if we find ourselves getting very late into the year and we do need a budget amendment, staff would bring that forward at that time and make that request then.
Okay, are there any questions, clarifications, concerns? Commissioner Wingard?
Could you remind me how long this contract would last for? Is it just, like, just in perpetuity to be able to have him on retainer or?
Ideally, this would be to cover the gap as we try to find the replacement position, potentially maybe a little bit of time just during training, I would assume, but no further after that. Once we have an individual in this position who is able to do the job, we'll just continue doing it in-house as we have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bush?
Have we been in this position before with accounting or not in a while?
Not in my tenure here.
Okay. But it's no real cause for concern, just something that happens. Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I hope that we approve a per-hour contract with Blystone and Bailey CPA for third-party accounting services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to number 14, consider approval of Storm Sewer Fund Deficit Elimination Plan. Manager dissons.
So the easiest way for me to do this one is to hand it off to our finance director, Chris Saladin, who can go into the particulars of this business item.
So if you'll recall back in, I believe it was the last meeting in June, we had our auditor in and did the presentation on our 2023 financials. In the process of going through everything, we basically discovered that we had a timing issue with one of our MDOT contracts for the storm sewer work being done on Pickard. Both Director Moore and I wondered the, well, we were communicated from MDOT that everything was going to happen in '24. It turns out they did design work in '23 and then build this for it. So we didn't have budget for it. We didn't transfer funds for it. However, it's the same work that we were planning on doing in 2024, so we have the funds in place. It's just really a timing issue. From an accounting perspective, as of 1-1, we recognize the prepaid, and from an accounting perspective, it's gone. But technically, we were in a deficit at the end of the year, so the state requires basically city commission resolution to eliminate the deficit.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yeah, just, you know, somebody who is not an economist.
I said Commissioner Eke?
As someone who is not an economist, you know, just lay persons terms. So what are we doing? Giving them the money or just simply cleaning this on the books?
Just basically recognizing the expense that occurred in '23.
Okay.
We thought it was going to occur this year because that's what they communicated to us. But then they did the design work and build this, but it was too late at that point for budget amendments, everything else. So it was really just the timing of the communication.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I hope that we approve the deficit elimination plan for the Storm Sewer Fund as of December 31, 2023.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we are moving on to our adoption of section 110.27 vendors of the City of Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances. And we're going to give this off to Michelle Sponseller. This is going to be your time to shine, right?
Okay.
You did such a good job earlier.
Oh, thank you. Let's go to our second presentation. All right, we're going to talk about vendor ordinance and transitory food service unit ordinances. I know, it sounds terribly exciting. Hang in there. We'll get through this, I promise. All right. So as a reminder, back, let's see, the end of May, we discussed six various topics. And so this evening, I'm going to cover those in review and And so this evening, I'm gonna cover those in review and we're gonna go over the highlights of the vendor ordinance and the highlights for the transitory food service unit ordinance, along with a quick discussion on fees. So a little bit of background, our vendor ordinance currently on the books was created in July 11th, 1994. Mobile food service providers, section 110.28 was October 14th of 2013. Both of these sections, however, regulated mobile food service operations. Staff recommended rewriting both of the ordinance after review of six key regulation and provisions. Those six areas, where in the city, so what designated areas? Hours of operation, you indicated it depends on the location. Proximity to permanent businesses, you are looking to keep that 150-foot buffer, keep it the same. Dining area restrictions, you're open to considering it depending on the area. New, you agreed to add in an annual inspection. And you were interested in also keeping the license regulations, but you would like to compare fees and best practices from around the state. That included number of licenses and the annual fee. So that document was included in the packet. I collected data from 11 different communities, so you could compare what they did, how would their fee was, areas of operation, hours of operation, all the different things. So let's talk about the new ordinances, shall we? We separated the non-prepared food from prepared food. Now, you might be thinking to yourself, but Michelle, what does that mean? So think non-prepared, your ice cream vendor that has an ice cream wrapped up in a in a container where your transitory food service unit is going to be making you a custom taco, shall we? Okay, so what we did, we cleared this up and we excluded charitable stands and children's activities because our current ordinance didn't speak to that. We are not looking to penalize children with lemonade stands, for goodness sakes, right? Don't want any, well, believe it or not, I had a couple of questions, well, but what about? And I thought, oh, no, let's go ahead and put that on paper, shall we? All right, permit requirements, application fees, background checks and annual inspections. We need to make sure that those are displayed properly and we have a detailed application process. So some of the regulations, we're looking at it citywide except in agricultural districts. Hours of operation 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., flexible, however, during special events. We made sure to put a note in here, quality and waste management, so no defective goods, mandatory waste containers. Vehicle regulations, we limited the size. We also spoke to service window positioning, proximity during events, 500 feet away, private property use with permission and consistency with existing code, speaking to noise, lighting, tents and signage. Transitory food service unit, again, that is prepared food, think of it in those terms. Using motorized vehicles, that could be mobile trailers, temporary food stations, carts, whether it's pedal cart or it's push cart. And again, we're excluding charitable stands and children's activities. And again, same permit requirements, you need to properly display it, detailed applications, background checks, annual inspections. Operating areas, again, citywide except agricultural district. However, we tweaked the hours of operation because this is a little different than our vendors. So think residential areas, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. General commercial, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Central business district, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. because that's our late night, late night traffic. We kept in place the 150-foot restriction without permission. Again, spoke to no defective goods, mandatory waste containers. Dining options allowable in certain locations. Vehicle regulations, again, limiting the size, service window positioning, have to stay 500 feet away during events, private property use with permission and again, consistency with existing code on noise, lighting, tents and signage. Fees, our current fee is $1,000. Comparative data, that ranges from $25 to $1,200 across the state, however, most are below $500. Staff provided tiered options based on the type of equipment, for example, push cart versus a trailer. And we are asking your input on that this evening to give us some direction so we can bring that back at the actual public hearing. Do you have questions?
Are there any questions?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Eke.
Okay, could you go back to the fees? So currently, it's 1,000.
Correct.
It doesn't matter.
Flat 1,000. $1,000, correct.
Okay, and you're saying that the range is between 25 to 1,200 across the state?
Correct.
And most of them are below 500?
Correct.
So how are we justifying 1,000?
Excellent question, I'm so glad that you asked.
I, yeah, I had to.
No, it's good. Remember that we have an entrepreneurial spirit here. However, remember that this would be in competition to our brick and mortar businesses that are paying taxes. So the difference can be viewed in that way.
So is that 1,000 per year?
That is correct.
Okay.
So tell me, if we have, like Dog Central, they have a push cart.
Correct.
Because they are a brick and mortar, but they also have the push cart that they take out during busy weekends. Do they pay the fee as well?
They would have to, yes. The way our ordinance is currently written, that would be $1,000.
Okay.
You are correct.
Okay.
The other thought I had, $1,000, we had a limited number of licenses currently.
Correct, that would be 12.
12, gotcha. Is it, it's just on a first-come, first-served basis, is it?
Correct.
Gotcha, do you know, are we out of those licenses?
No, we are not.
Have we hit that limit ever?
I don't know, I don't believe we've ever hit it. I'm trying to remember the number off the top of my head, I believe it's seven currently.
Okay, my 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 line of questioning there is just if we always were maxed out at 12 and we kept the fee at 1,000, we have people who have like consistently been doing that for 1,000 instead of we're opening it up to anyone. Well, why am I paying $1,000 to be one of 12 people? But if we're not seeing that exclusivity there and everything, if we're not maxing out, I would be okay with maybe lowering it a little bit. I don't know. Sorry, I'm just.
Commissioner Bush.
Do other communities have a scaler system? Like I can see how we are also in an environment where these things would probably be very seasonal and maybe there'd be a need for a variety of different types of entrepreneurs in the market.
I found only three communities that have some sort of a tiered system. And those that did had reviewed or rewritten their ordinance in the last two or three years. Those communities who have had this ordinance on the books a number of years, it's been a flat fee similar to ours.
Okay.
What is the commission's thought on this?
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at, I I understand the, you know. I I understand the need to, you know, have this rate to also compensate for the taxes. But given, you know, where we are, and, you know, I'm thinking, 1,000 might seem exorbitant. I I'm kind of torn really here, right? You know, that's, I'm struggling with this 1,000. I understand your explanation about, you know, paying attention to the fact that we also have businesses that pay taxes. But you're also saying that even the people who have an established business in town who pay taxes, if they were to try and do this, they too will pay 1,000, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
That's the complication for me.
So we currently have seven, approximately seven vendors that each paid 1,000. Does that 7,000 cover the cost that we need for inspection, paperwork?
Currently, we have no fee built in for the inspection that that happens on, is part of the general process. I would say there are times that I might say that that fee covers the staff time. But this ordinance currently on the books has been very challenging to interpret. And I will tell you that myself and the clerk's office and your parks director have had a number of conversations that have, we've probably exceeded that $1,000. So it depends on who we're talking to and the nuances of who they are, where they wanna be.
Okay.
There's not an easy answer on that one.
Well, it's like with a push cart, obviously, you're not going to be outside when it is raining.
One would think.
It would just not make any sense, it's way different than having a a vehicle, a trailer, mobile space where you're inside and your people can come to the window and get what they want and leave.
Correct.
Okay, I think your explanation just a few minutes ago helps. You know, in terms of the fees, you know, the the coverage of the additional responsibilities, the things you have to do. Because it says $1,000 and then, you know, what does that cover? And how do you cover the other expenses?
Well, and and part of the rewriting of both of these ordinances was not just for the public, it was also for staff to help answer some of the, or really speak to some of the areas that had not been discussed previously. So it will be very beneficial for us.
Okay, good. Commissioner Bush.
The, so the food, the food establishments, I get. And then when we talk about vendors, we're talking about anybody who sells, they, are you talking about like, they might sell their art? Or they might sell, is that what you're talking about, you're talking about packaged foods only?
Not just packaged food, I just wanna be clear, if you're thinking of arts and crafts vendors, let's say, for art's sake, they're a market for the arts, that's not what this is being to.
Well, the market for the arts is different.
Okay.
But let's just say theoretically, there is somebody who, you know, they have.
Dresses. It doesn't really matter, right?
So this covers that?
Correct.
Okay, so one of, because one of the points I wanna put up just to add into it, because we see this issue in Union Township, is I've, I don't know if this is the place to put it, but something about live animals.
Live animals.
I know, I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah.
Live animals?
Yeah, because there, there is a.
I feel like we should.
Okay.
You get what I'm saying?
I do.
And and I I I just, I don't know if this is the place to put it, but I feel like it should be somewhere and this is a potential place to put it.
Yes, okay, so I would say that would not be under the transitory food service unit.
Right, well, I wanted to be, that's why I asked very clearly.
That was a terrible joke, it is not at all, oh, wow.
That's what I wanted to make sure we were talking about.
If I could interject.
But it's just an issue that we, this, I I feel like it's an issue that.
To put, do you would like to add that?
If the commission thinks that it it makes sense here, this is something I've talked to Director Laurie about too.
I'm not sure it would make sense at this point.
Yeah, well, where, is it any, I mean, is it anywhere?
Commissioner Wingard.
Yeah, so just to clarify for some of my fellow commissioners, what what is being referred to, there is like essentially for, essentially a pop-up stand for like adoption of like, like dog, like dog breeders and whatnot, yeah. Yeah, no, not cooking animals or like live, like hey, we're gonna like, the whole process right in front of you. Just adoption of animals and everything occurs.
But I can see how a vent, like a vendor could say like, well, I have this license, I'm selling my my homemade like crafts and I have a litter of kittens or something like that, I just, you know, I just.
Yeah, no, it's not something that that we put under the vendor ordinance, it's something that we certainly could add to it if you would like us to.
Well, as long as it's covered somewhere.
No, it's not.
That's.
So we would wanna add that.
Yeah, like in across the city.
Excuse me.
Would that happen though?
Okay. They are at, they're at the parking lot pet store every weekend, sorry, go ahead, she knows.
Not to my knowledge, is it addressed at all? So the question is, do you want it permitted or do you wanna make sure that it is not permitted?
Not permitted.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I was just getting clarification.
Yeah, not permitted, because, yeah, it's a health hazard.
So not permitted, yes.
So that's something that we would wanna add to the vendor ordinance, speak to not being allowed.
I would support that.
I I would also support making an addition of not allowing mobile vendor of adoptable animals or animals of any kind within the city limits, live animals.
It sounds like we want Union Township to do that business.
Well, or to have an actual pet store that we have.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, obviously, this wouldn't apply to things like at the farmer's market, the animal shelter brings animals to the animal shelter. Obviously, that would not apply to that. And if there was a special case that might come up, you know, that could be addressed, but I think in terms of general, we should just nip it in the bud.
We can, we can work on language that excludes hats and Karma Cat Cafe. I will have to work on that to make sure that we're we're covered, but, you know, we can, we can do that. And this is the time, that's why I wanted to do the presentation this evening. So if we had tweaks, it gives staff the ability to do that ahead of publishing for the public hearing, so that's.
Commissioner Eke.
Okay, I I just, now that I seem to have a sense of what we're discussing in terms of animals, you know, it might probably be useful not to name specific animals. What if somebody brings a pig? You know, has the whole.
As I just said, not live animals.
Yeah, so just live animals, that's it. And it doesn't, we don't have to define them so that we don't get into the complication that we had to deal with, with the definition of the noxious weed and, you know, and all of that.
We can do that.
Any live animal.
Okay.
Okay, but you're still looking for whether or not we wanna stay at $1,000?
Yes, but I'm also interested, if there are other tweaks to either ordinance that you'd like to make, I would very much like to hear that this evening as well. And then, yes, the fee.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I see on the chart, I'm on page 177 of the packet, that there's not only the license fee, but is the inspections fee new and the background check fee, are those new fees?
The background check is not new, the inspection fee is new, correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Rowland.
Are we gonna, so if it's a push cart or a food truck, they all get charged that $1,000 fee no matter what?
Currently, that is correct.
Okay, so, but that seems kinda steep for a push cart.
That's one of the reasons why I gave you some options of the the tiered look. But again, I do not want to make any assumptions because when we met back at the end of May, it was, nope, we're pretty sure we wanna keep $1,000, but we're open into seeing what other communities have. So I walked a fine line by giving you, here's what it currently is and a couple of options to look at.
I think that the push cart should have a lower fee.
What are you proposing? There's two options here.
It's three options, actually, so, yeah.
I think with the push cart, we should do option two, the top line.
And what is that?
That's the $350 license fee with the 75 inspection fee, $10 background check fee. It's on the chart?
I know, my, it's getting to it.
Yeah, thank you.
So are we talking only push cart for that because there's other things in that category?
Yeah, I I think for the push cart because it's, I'm thinking relative size itself and the amount of product that it would be able to sell on, based on that and plus the.
Perhaps a smaller range.
Yeah, just smaller range. And plus, push cart, you know, I'm thinking, you know, year-round including winter. Based on my experience in larger cities, push carts really aren't out there during the snow, the dead of winter where as a food truck would be and would be capable of doing so. It's just, just a thought.
Well, what if we added to that the pedal cart?
Well, the pedal cart would be, I mean, there's no place for the actual vendor physically, there's nothing to shelter them. So the likelihood of them being out all year round is potentially less, especially if it's inclement weather.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying is that would we wanna add the pedal cart to the push cart fee?
Yeah, I would think that would be better, yeah, better.
But it's already there, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should be. So it'd be two-tiered. So it'd be two-tiered based on the type of vehicle that is applying for the license.
Okay.
Like a food truck would be charged, I can see that being charged a thousand dollars because the propensity of it being all year round is greater than a push cart or a pedal cart.
Likely higher cost of goods, too.
Exactly.
Commissioner Bush.
I, I really do want to support that type of tiered pricing that Commissioner Rollins is suggesting. I am just, and I came in here wanting to support that, but I am concerned that whenever we hear about a project that does not cover its costs. And if you're saying the staffing costs to cover these issues don't cover its costs, but there is also the the fact that these, these entities enrich our community, which is what we want to do as this, as a city, is enrich our community. I mean, we're not trying to play favorites or anything like that. We are just trying to make it more possible for people to do business in the city of Mount Pleasant, which is kind of what we, what we hear sometimes. So you've listed this as an option. It must not be like prohibitive to like still being able to manage vendor carts and vendor and mobile vendors.
Let me go back. So when I was speaking to, does the thousand dollar cover staff time? I'm speaking about the existing ordinance and the very clunky nature that it is.
Oh, okay.
By making these changes, we've, we've cleared up some of the confusion, a lot of the confusion, most of the confusion. And this is going to make it a lot easier on staff.
Oh, okay, by all means then, yeah. Okay, perfect.
But to be clear, I want to go back. What I was hearing was if it's a push cart, pedal cart, booth or tent, looking at 350 and if it's a vehicle or trailer, keeping it a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I was clear on that. And is that for both vendor and transitory food service units or just transitory food services?
Transitory food services.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bush.
Do we need to have any more specifications perhaps on like square footage of retail space? Or like square footage of mobile business spaces? Like, I mean theoretically, I don't know, what if I had a giant push cart or something like that? I don't know with.
Theoretically possible, but I'm trying to picture one in my head.
Well, I just didn't know if there was a, like if we said, you know, because we say tent or tent, so like, what if the tent is greater than 10 by 10 or if.
I'm. Right, so let's, let's say the, the tent in question is larger than 10 by 10. That is automatically going to limit where they can be located.
Yeah, that's true.
Automatically. And likely they're going to be on private property just by that very nature alone.
Fair.
Anything larger than a 10 by 10 tent, they are required, it's already on the books, to have a tent permit and work with the building official.
Okay, okay.
So I, I.
You think that's covered?
Think it's covered.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ake.
I'm thinking about the complications of trying to delineate whether the 1,000 applies primarily to, you know, the transitory food service or to the vendor. So, you know, I mean, if we're going to just simply say, you know, I would rather just simply have a flat fee for the two. And then the sections that we begin to prorate, so to say, would be, you know, the push cart or the pedal cart or the booth and the tent because they're smaller and they're probably, you know, a little bit more restrictive in terms of the frequency, you know. The vendor could have 10 by 10 tent. So now what?
But that's already covered up there, another ordinance.
No, but I'm thinking in terms of the, you know, the, the fee. So just rather than, you know, I, I resist things that complicate issues where, you know, we're trying to have some kind of clarity and suddenly, you know, we are creating complications here.
Would, so again, I want to make sure I'm here. So would you like it to be the same as the transitory food? So it's the vendor and transitory food unit, they both mirror themselves. So if it's push cart, pedal cart, booth or tent, it's 350. And if anyone is using, whether it's again, food or otherwise, it's a thousand dollars.
That's, that, that would be my, my inclination.
Okay, I would like to, instead of it being a thousand dollars, I would like it to be the 550 license fee with a 75 inspection and the $10 background check.
Which option is this?
That's option three.
Where is the option? I don't see.
It's the next page.
Yeah, the next one, yes.
Page 178.
So it would be for the smaller vehicles, it would be a total of $435. That would be the 350, the push cart, the pedal car, all that. 350 plus the 75 plus the 10. And then for the vehicles, the vendors have it be the 550, the 75.
And the 10. Would that cover your cost? Because I think what Michelle was talking about is, you know, all these other costs. Are there additional costs besides the inspection and the background check? You were talking about staff costs. Are there any other costs besides these two?
Nope, those, those are the costs.
Those are the costs, okay. Yeah.
And are you thinking the reason to lower it would be we would entice more to come? Because it sounds like the ones that we have are content paying the thousand.
Well, just because you're content paying the thousand doesn't mean that you wouldn't want to be able to pay less and be able to put more of those funds back into your merchandise. You know, food costs have gone up, other things have gone up. And why would we, if what you're saying is that this would cover the cost of what we do, then let's give that cost break to the vendors.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't, you know, I really do not want this. I said earlier that 1,000 was exorbitant for me. I'm looking at it thinking, then how much do they make, you know, at the end of the year? So I really do not want this to be prohibitive. We want to encourage, you know, business in town. We want diversity, you know, in terms of what is available, you know, what's, what comes to town. So I, I would support the mayor's, you know, suggestion, that option three.
Option three for the vehicles.
Yeah, for the vehicles.
Vehicles and trailers.
And then option two for the smaller push cars.
Push cards, tents.
And then, I would just like to, as we're talking about these fees, I just wanted to make a note for the general audience. We're also looking at, along with these options, a qualified push cart or vehicle, whatever size, we waive the license fee for qualified veterans or 501(c)(3) charitable organizations. So I just wanted to put that out there for the record.
Cool. Do you have what you need?
I think so, unless you had any tweaks to the ordinances themselves.
The animals, the live.
Other than the animals, which, okay. I think we're set then.
All right, so.
We'll move on.
I will entertain a motion to consider setting a public hearing.
I move to set a public hearing.
Wait.
My apologies, Commissioner. With the amendments, I think it's probably cleaner that we make those amendments, bring those back, make sure the city commission is good with that before setting the public hearing.
So I have the, the information that we discussed this evening on the fees, I'll bring that back in a clean form. So you'll be able to see that all at one time.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to, because we handled 15 and 16 together, we're going to move on to 17. The lawn maintenance ordinance. Everyone's excited about this one. Go ahead, Manager DeSantis.
Wait, didn't we do this already?
No, we haven't done this yet.
So Steph has prepared a proposed amended version of the city's lawn maintenance ordinance based on feedback provided by the city commission. The amended version shows the proposed changes from the current ordinance. This includes the expansion of noxious weeds list to match the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development list and an expanded list of allowable native grasses. The proposed ordinance would allow these native grasses to grow to an unrestricted height while turf grass height restrictions would remain in place with the current standard.
Okay, are there any questions? I knew there were a few nightshades out there, but I didn't realize there were that many.
Give them nightshades.
Yeah, you can't get rid of nightshades.
Well, you kind of, it just takes a lot of work, just like dandelions.
The birds like them. Just don't eat them.
Any questions, any comments?
Difficulty, Mary.
We're talked out on this one.
Yeah.
I've read through it. I think that the changes are what we requested. And it reads well.
Good job, Director.
Yep.
Laurie.
Yeah, if there are no, no concerns, no changes, no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, where am I looking at? I move to set a public hearing for August 26, 2024, to allow for public input and to consider the adoption of 96.05 Lawn Maintenance Ordinance Amendments.
Is there? All right.
Chris Rollins got in there.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, we're moving to a public hearing. Now we got one more consider, consideration for a public hearing on building standards and commercial districts.
So we do have our Director of Planning and Community Development, Manuela Povideco, who is joining us via Zoom today. She's going to run down through a presentation outlining some proposed zoning ordinance changes that have been proposed by the planning commission. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Manuela.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Can you all hear me well?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. So I have here today a zoning ordinance tax change proposal to advance policies that were discussed last year with the planning commission. We discussed these items at the September 1st and November 2nd work sessions. So generally speaking, the overall goal for this zoning tax amendment will be to provide greater design flexibility within commercial districts. More specifically, the planning commission had recommended the tax changes that you can see here highlighted in this slide. And I'm just going to go through each one of them because we packaged a lot of items altogether into one big tax amendment. So the first one is to allow a reduction of the 60% buildout rule. The buildout rule basically requires building facades to occupy at least 60% of the principal frontage to ensure the buildings are the prominent feature of development as opposed to parking or otherwise. So in specific situations such as narrow sites or for when we have greater site access needs and design limitations, we felt that a reduction in the 60% buildout rule may be needed after my experience here working for Mount Pleasant. So this tax change will be more easily enabling developments, especially drive-through establishments or other auto-oriented uses which compose much of our developments in Mount Pleasant. Second, we would be clarifying that the 60% buildout rule only applies to the principal frontage on corner lots to ensure that side plants can accommodate parking at the back of the building. We would also be amending the definition of principal frontage to address situations when the building's address and the main entrance are not matching the narrow side of the lot, which basically is from where lot width is measured today and that is from where the principal frontage is. So in this situation, we will be enabling developments and improvements that better match the surrounding context and avoid sending projects to the zoning board of appeals for variances, which we had a few cases last year. We would also be removing the minimum ceiling height requirement, which is 11 feet today. That is currently applicable to business, commercial, office, retail, personal or service or lodging uses. And the issue with that is that high ceilings, they increase heating and cooling costs. And I guess if you think about sustainability, it's counterintuitive. So that would be a recommendation. The next set of items, they are applicable only within City 5 districts, but that would still exclude downtown since downtown has a different context when compared to the other areas of the city that we have City 5 districts being mapped, which basically is in the south of Mission Street. So for that, we will be removing the zero foot front setback requirement for corner lots and instead allow corner lot buildings to set back up to 15 feet from the front lot line, which is consistent with how mid-block sites work today. This tax change will be ensuring good driver visibility when entering the right of way from intersections, considering the Mission Street is a pretty fast and busy road. We would also be removing the maximum 24-foot side setback requirement while maintaining the 60% buildout rule, which will be giving the flexibility at the same time that we are making sure that buildings, they are complying with the urban design principles that were behind the farm base code that we adopted in 2018. Last, we'll be replacing the minimum two-story requirement to instead require building facades to be at least 24 feet in height along the street. So any building behind those, behind existing buildings would be able to be shorter, but the building at the frontage will still be required to be 24 feet in height, except that it would not be required to have two stories, which is a huge development barrier today. A minimum facade height achieves the goals of enclosure and avoids development stagnation of minimum story requirements. Sorry, and just to go back, the planning commission also had agreed with staff's suggestion to amend the administrative waiver section to allow the city planner to enable up to a 10% deviation of dimensional standards to better replace the necessity for seeking dimensional variances as suggested by the zoning reform toolkit. So the current allowance is 5%. That will go to 10%. This, all of these discussions and items that I have here today, they were spurred by the planning department's outreach efforts that happened in 2023, referred to as zoning for economic opportunity. At such times, staff held conversations with over 20 participants who represent a wide range of stakeholders in Mount Pleasant, all the way from government and nonprofit organizations to the technical community, lenders, brokers and property owners. Overall, the proposal in text is a follow-up of such outreach effort, which aim to identify and address zoning barriers to encourage development, redevelopment of underutilized buildings and lots, attract new businesses and more easily enable business expansion, and last, encourage a greater variety and greater mix of uses. We believe that these amendments will ultimately balance the goals in the master plan and the current zoning ordinance requirements with existing development patterns. So the staff and the planning commission believe that proposed changes will automatically attract and encourage my private investment in the city moving forward. And then last, I'll just kind of close with some illustrations that I created or illustrations that came forward to me as part of the planning review process with some projects that unfortunately were not able to be advanced due to some of these barriers that we're trying to lift. So this first example that you can see here on the left shows the proposed site plan for a mixed-use building that had been under development. The removal of the 24-foot maximum side yard setback requirement would be allowing proposals like this one, which accommodates a small plaza for the residents of the mixed-use building. Also, the removal of a minimum ceiling height requirement would better enable side plants that propose smaller storefronts that are much needed in our community or need to accommodate buildings designed with slope sites. The example that you can see on the right show a narrow site along Mission Street where the Lasting Rita Mexican restaurant used to be located. The site remains vacant for a long time. In, in this illustrated site plan, what was being suggested was a drive-through establishment that wanted to reuse the existing parking lot as much as possible to reduce development costs. So in this example here, the changes that we talked about with the 24-foot side setback removal and the reduction of the 60% buildout rule could help facilitate the reuse or purpose of existing sites for redevelopment. The examples that you see here in this slide were created by me to illustrate other design options that would become possible after the zoning tax change is approved. So the image on the left, it illustrates an outdoor seating area, which can be more easily accommodated without the 24-foot maximum side setback requirement. Now, I would say that most commercial developments in Mount Pleasant do not want to be mixed-use developments as of yet. So, you know, that means basically residences on top or two-story commercial. So second stories are currently required along South. So second stories are currently required along South Mission, and this proposed change would remove that requirement while maintaining, again, the minimum overall height requirement to ensure that proposed designs are achieving the master plan and ordinance urban design principles. And just kind of briefly, the goal to bring greater building mass along Mission Street is to create more of an urban environment and help reduce traffic speeds by design and not by speed, you know, plates. Ultimately, this would be better activating the public realm. The image on the right shows a drive-through establishment that occupies less than the required 60% buildout rule, which is often necessary to ensure that side flow can be functional for drive-through sites plus their parking traffic. Last, in this slide, I'm illustrating a mixed-use development that is basically maxing out the development potential within City 5 districts in Mount Pleasant, mapped on South Mission. The tax changes, they relate to the principal frontage. Those would be helping corner sites like this one to accommodate parking behind the building. And the removal of the zero lot line requirement will ensure the buildings can more easily design and be better placed on the site to ensure safety at intersections. So all that said, I'm here today just to ask the City Commission to set a public hearing to consider the proposed tax change at the September 9, 2024 City Commission meeting. And you can find the proposed ordinance amendments and the public hearing slides and the, as attachments in your packet as well. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Manuela. Are there any questions? Commissioner Wengard.
Yeah, so on this topic, the one concern I do have is the removal of the two-story requirements along the space. Primarily, I know that issues of like speed control for the corridor are met by having the height requirement of 24 feet and by putting an additional facade. My concern is that we are a landlocked municipality without additional space to truly build out. A lot of the buildings that are going in have a fairly long lifespan, so I, I would think that we'd want to be more intentional about that. And that's where, for me, seeing the two-story requirement, I, I see that as more of a boon of like what we would like to see there as far as density goes. And, and yeah, unless, unless we're, we don't have room to expand, that's the biggest thing. So, so having that like intentional design there is, I, I think that's, it would be important. So that's my one, my one issue with the proposed changes.
Yeah, if I may just comment on that, I think that's a great concern. The zoning ordinance that was just adopted in 2018 had so much thought put into it as well as the master plan in 2020. What I would say is that based on my experience in the, with zoning in general, it's always better to try to lead that intention or those goals with encouragements within the ordinance as opposed to mandatory, you know, requirements. So one way that I do want to explore that in the future few years, hopefully in the short term, is to work with the Planning Commission with potentially a certification or something in that nature to allow greater mass. So potentially even beyond five stories to make sure that we allow for more efficient development patterns. So if you're putting the money into, you know, putting elevator on the site, you likely would like to go taller as opposed to five stories, which is the maximum cap that we have overall in the city. So this is not in the proposal yet, but it's something that I wanted to keep exploring with the Planning Commission moving forward, try to create some tools in the zoning ordinance that, you know, allow for even more development pursuant to special approvals or something like that, to try to get that real estate to, to develop moving forward.
Okay, Commissioner Ake. Can you please speak into your microphone?
Thank you for reminding me. Thank you for this presentation. I think my, my worry is similar to Commissioner Wengard's. And in fact, as you were presenting, and I was thinking about space, I was thinking about model cities or prototypical cities. And I, you know, there's something happening at, you know, cities that look like ours that may be landlocked, let's put it that way. And I'm thinking about East Lansing, okay? There are, you know, something happening around Trow Bridge in East Lansing where they're capturing space because they don't have that much space and what they have done, you know, in their, in terms of multi-use buildings, or at least the Lansing, you know, off Michigan Avenue around, what is it, Front Door, what they have done with those buildings, you know, around there. And so, you know, as you were talking, those, you know, what they're doing over there happens to be in my head. And I was thinking about maybe what we need to do as opposed to, because we're thinking about the fact, we've been talking about the fact that we are definitely challenged in terms of space, you know, horizontal ex, what is it, horizontal expansion. So now we're thinking vertically and limiting this, you know, you know, creates a problem. So can we take a look at some cities that look like our city and see what, what they're doing in terms of capturing space, livable space, or, you know, and businesses or multi, you know, use, you know, buildings, you know, I think that would help. So I'm talking about East Lansing because it's familiar landscape for me, East Lansing and Lansing. I'm watching what's happening there and I'm thinking, this is exciting. How about, you know, if we could do something like this? Maybe we can't, but let's take a look and see what's possible. Manuela?
I can certainly take a look at it. I was going to say that the way to instigate the market is to create more livable spaces. So Mission Street today as designed, it's not instigating residential development. You know, people don't necessarily want to live along Mission. It's a busy road, it's, it's dangerous. And we just, you know, released a survey, I presented that to all of you. I think, you know, the Mission Street corridor plan will help with all of that. Eventually, if we can at least do the project in phases to add more landscaping, make it more pleasant, then we may see more development coming in of that nature with multiple stories. So again, I'm more on the line of encourage that kind of development that we do want to see, and zoning can do a lot of that. We've created so many incentives in the zoning ordinance when I worked in New York. And I think, you know, we also had the constrained area as well, so I'm pretty familiar with the concept. But yeah, I can definitely take a look at East Lansing, maybe make some phone calls and see how they've been able to manage and incentivize that kind of development. But again, my experience with Mission and after looking at the, all the developments that occurred since 2018, which was when the zoning ordinance was approved, we've unfortunately lost a lot of redevelopment opportunities that could have helped remove driveways, improve the pedestrian scape, and get better buildings because of the second-story requirement. We have banks and restaurants and folks don't want to put the money in for residences on top that they don't see as having the market to rent at this point. But I'm very optimistic and I would love to keep thinking creatively on how to bring more of that into Mount Pleasant because I do think that people are looking for different housing options that we currently do not provide.
Okay, Commissioner Ake.
Hi, Manuela, I appreciate your response and your willingness to take a look. But also I want to add that, you know, in, at a recent conference, you know, by the, you know, Michigan Municipality League, one of the things, issues that came up had to do, in fact, huge conversation had to do with living spaces where, you know, people want to live. They want to live, you know, close to their shopping areas, they want to live close to their work areas, they want to live within proximity of all these, you know, amenities. And so on the one hand, you're saying to me, yes, yeah, Mission is scary, yeah, but there are people who live close to Mission who walk across. At the same time, the league is suggesting that the surveys they have done, you know, say that people really want to live very close to where these, you know, facilities are. So I don't know how we reconcile what they're saying and also what you're saying. And, and I think maybe one of the things, you know, if you take a look, find, you know, you know, and perhaps have some conversations with people who cities look like ours, who knows what you might find out. And I'm not disputing what you're saying, please, I want to make clear that I'm not disputing what you're saying. But I'm also saying that the league's surveys say this is what's happening. People want to live in these particular spaces. And Mission Street somehow seems to be one of those spaces that has the potential to include both living space and business space. That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner Bush.
So I was going to say similar things to what Manuela was going to say, just, I, I love the idea of incentives. I think it's a, it's an example of build it and they will come. And if we, if we start some, I mean, we've already lost out on economic development with the current policy that we have. And the type of businesses, the type of development that people are asking for and looking for and coming to us with are not the type of places that have typically residential spaces on top of them. And the cost of a second story greatly increases the cost of a project. So I feel like if we get the ball rolling, start some improvements, and then go with the carrot of a second story, then we're going to be, then people are going to be willing to see the change and, and maybe invest in that change. But I think just to get the ball rolling, we, the, I, I, I would support the reduction of the two-story requirement, just to get the ball rolling.
Any other questions, concerns? Commissioner Wengard.
Yeah, just kind of as a bit of compromise, I guess, there. I'd be, I think the idea of providing those incentives would be definitely, definitely beneficial, especially with the, as you're pointing, as staff and fellow commissioners have pointed out, losing out on opportunities, so lost, the lost opportunities there. But I think it's also important to maintain still the investment of that plan in 2018 of like seeing things come forward. Perhaps as a compromise, we could move forward with removing the two, two-floor minimum as we have a plan in place of that carrot that you were talking about.
The incentives.
So having those in conjunction, it would incentivize us to come up with that, it would, of having that incentive there.
Is that possible, Manuela? You mentioned that you, that would have to go through Planning Commission, like is that, would that derail the whole process, like in terms of delay, what we would be able to accomplish?
Yeah, it will delay. Just to kind of mention what my original timeline was, I applied for a housing, it's the, the Housing Redness Grant. So I was able to receive that grant, which will basically pay for my time to do a housing tax amendment. So I was thinking about packaging that work next year, so between 2025 and 2026, and do a well-through, look at all our residential rules, remove any barriers as I'm doing with the commercial, be doing with residential development. And as part of that packet, I would like to, you know, talk about different types of incentives. So I haven't done that work yet, I'm working on Mission Street and Commercial this year. So I was going to work on that next year. If we would like to try maybe one type of incentive as part of this, certainly I'll, you know, I'll follow that orientation from the City Commission, but I'll need to go back to the Planning Commission, and then this particular tax amendment would get a few months of delay.
Commissioner Ake.
Okay, so I'm looking at your text, Manuela, and you indicate here that the Planning Department's outreach efforts, you know, extended, included conversations with over 20 participants who represent a wide range of stakeholders in the, so, but this doesn't say to me how they responded, you know, that might actually help. What is their feedback, okay? What, you know, just based on this, these conversations and your interpretation, what was their feedback?
Yeah, I, I presented this feedback to you a while back, but it's been a while, so I understand the question. I do have a full report on, I have a full report on the conversations that I can certainly put in the packet for the public hearing if we move forward that route, but I can also send that by email. But basically, the, the feedback that I've received was very strong on the second-story requirement. We did have real estate agents that came forward and talked about their experience talking with separate developers, you know, developments of different kinds, and how that second-story requirement scares away folks. Sometimes we don't even hear from them because they do see that second-story requirement, and then they don't even come to Mount Pleasant. And then the few times that I do get them on my desk, believe me, I work very creatively to try to come up with solutions for them. I have an urban design degree and architecture degree, so I sketch things, and I still wasn't able to manage to bring some of those businesses in because of that second-story requirement. So I did hear that a lot, as well as the zero-foot lot, foot lot line setback that has been a huge issue as well.
Okay, all right, so you've provided me with, you know, a little bit of information. And believe me, I do not remember, you know, your, your, you know, the, the feedback. So because you've read so many documents, you know, so, so thank you, this helps.
Are there any other concerns? Commissioner Bush.
I just want to point something out. When we talk about being landlocked, I mean, I come from other communities where being landlocked can literally mean being, you know, landlocked by geographical features. And as much as we want to capture as much development in the city of Mount Pleasant as possible for our tax base and for our constituents, we're not in the same situation that some communities are when we say landlocked in that our community members can still get services and resources and housing in Union Township in the surrounding areas. They are not completely landlocked. And so I, I don't think we're under necessarily all of the same constraints that some truly landlocked community are, geographically landlocked communities are in terms of, yes, we need more housing, but it, it doesn't have to be along Mission Street, that would be nice down the road, but there's also plenty of vacant, you know, places that could be addressed other, you know, in, in, in Union Township and in other areas. So I just, I, I don't, I, obviously, we want to capture as much of the tax base and the development in the city of Mount Pleasant to keep, you know, our, our community strong, but we do also have resources available that are, that maybe are not in traditional landlocked areas.
But we're not talking about resources, we're talking about expansion in terms of living space. Mount Pleasant is not going to expand into Union. I think, you know, so it's, you know, contain the conversation in terms of the expansion of the housing, which is what we're addressing. I'm not talking about resources that our people can access, I'm talking about livable space.
I was including housing as a resource, but yeah.
But it's still not Mount Pleasant, Union Township is not Mount Pleasant.
I completely, I completely agree that, I completely agree with you, and I do think the preferences, obviously, we, we are here to represent Mount Pleasant, but I do also think that our community members, we're not as limited as, 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 as truly being landlocked as it sounds.
I understand.
Okay, any other concerns, questions, clarifications needed? Are we okay to go to motion?
I am.
Okay. Who would like to move on this?
I will move that we set a public hearing to consider the proposed tax change at the September 9, 2024 City Commission meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Ake, a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those oppose, no. Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Is there anything that the Commissioner would like to bring forward at this time?
I mentioned it at the last meeting, but Marker for the Arts is coming up.
Yes. Okay.
I would just mention to my fellow Commissioners, I have a couple of health topic, public health topic questions that I was going to be reaching out to relevant bodies on. Topics include air quality, again, random assortment here about the avian flu and everything which we've heard about in the news, and then the opioid crisis. So again, just a random assortment, I had questions and I was, when I get a response, I'll bring them back to the Commission.
I also have. We're talking about I also have, we're talking about, you know, environmental sustainability or climate change and I do a lot of walking around the city parks, you know, around the, along the river and I look at the river all the time, okay? I, you know, I'm curious about, you know, the quality of that, you know, river, the water. I do recall a time when if you walked down, I think it's Nelson Park, you know, there's that little beach there and you'd find people playing and, you know, nothing is going on there, now what's going on? I mean, I do understand the need to clean up, take care of our lakes, but oh, by the way, we don't have a lake in Mount Pleasant, we do have a river that flows or runs through Mount Pleasant. So how are we managing it? Who is responsible? What are we doing? You know, how usable, you know, is it? I'm not saying usable in terms of drinking the water, but people going in there or walking into it, you know, I don't remember the last time I stepped into it, I'm afraid to. Just so, maybe this is something, this is one of the ways in which we take care of our environment too and make it, you know, usable space, right? It's part of our park system. So could you, you know, manage a descent, look into that? You don't have to respond right now, but check into that.
I could give you a pretty quick answer on this. Well, obviously, I think the care for our environment is all of our collective duties. Regulation of the Chippewa River is underneath the guise of the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, which is a state office.
So we have no responsibility, nothing at all?
As individuals, one can argue that, as a community, one could argue that, but let's just say the health, what goes into the river, those kind of things is all regulated by the state of Michigan.
Okay, so here is something, to what extent then, how does the city at least, you know, this river runs through our community and now we're not, you know, I, I, I don't see people doing anything with it. So what is our role in terms of saying to the, you know, the state, hey, wait a minute, we've got a problem here or we don't have a problem? If I wanted to complain, if I wanted the state to do something or a resident wanted the state to do something, rather than, you know, instead of writing the state, can the city say to the state, you know, we're concerned about this, you need to, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
The city can do that. We've done proclamations in the past for certain particular courses of action, so if that's something the city commission wanted to do, that could be done.
I'm interested in that because I walk along the river and nothing's happening, huge river, nothing's happening, that's a problem. It is funny that I'm talking about the river.
You talk to me when you want to talk about the river!
Please speak into your microphone.
Sorry, okay, sorry. There is, I don't know what you mean by there's, there's, there's not a lot of stuff happening through the river, are you talking about people swimming in the river?
Yeah.
So for the past 10 years or more, the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe Water Quality Coordinator in cooperation with several of other agencies, including his predecessor, were involved in some water quality monitoring. And so you've probably heard about the E. coli.
Yeah, E. coli, salmonella.
So that, so perhaps people are becoming more aware of that. And the, the, the E. coli does become an issue just on the west side of Mount Pleasant because it, it, the primary source is from the north branch of the Chippewa, which comes from faulty septic systems in Beale City. And because of the work that the Water Quality Coordinator has been doing, the regulations and inspections of septic in Beale City has been drastically improved over the last couple of years. And I would expect that we'd be seeing a turnaround in that.
Hopefully.
We're also very lucky that one of the top, Elizabeth Ohm is a professor, perhaps you know her, she is actually a nationwide expert on E. coli and other contaminants in recreational waterways, so we're very lucky to have her in our community as well. And, and yeah, so I think maybe perhaps people are being more aware, that is true. But I think it's also a blessing that we are more aware because now we are able to do something about it. All envirom, all environmental resources have been affected by humans in some way. And I am, for one, very grateful that we do have these resources in our community, the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe and Central Michigan University, who are both doing fantastic things to, you know, protect what I believe is our most important resource here in the city, but I'm a little biased.
Okay, 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 I, I understand that part, I understand that part, but I'm also, you know, listen, I grew up around rivers and we, you know, apart from just simply protecting that, it's also using it in different ways, okay? So here is a resource and I'm just simply asking what we can do, how we can even manage it better, make it much more, you know, usable than it is, what, you know, how do we hold the state accountable? If it is not the city's responsibility to do some of these things, what is the city's role in trying to hold the state accountable or responsible for doing what it's supposed to be do, you know, apart from what, you know, local organizations are doing? And hey, this is, you know, taking care of the environment is the responsibility of everybody. It's not, you know, so what is our role? What is the city's role? I want us to just look into that, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments, announcements, concerns? All right, we're going to move on to the public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. I do want to remind everyone that when we have our public comment and public hearings, these are opportunities for the public to comment on business and non-business items. Questions will not be answered during these times, there will not be a debate between the city commission and the individual. Instead, those should be directed to city hall staff during normal business hours. And like I stated at the beginning, we do have, you can email commission@mt-pleasant.org or comment@mt-pleasant.org if you have questions ahead of time. But at this time, we'll open up the public hearing, you may step to the podium, you'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom tonight that wishes to speak? All right, are there any emails?
No.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time?
This one, this, this one.
Yes.
Good, okay. Hi, I'm Joseph Keryon, I live on 109 North Arnold Street. I couldn't help but notice you guys' excitement for the lawn ordinance coming back. Just wondering, can we bring popcorn next week, or next meeting? Kidding, no, but I did want to end on the climate change subject, I'm a huge advocate on that, I, you know, I even live car-free in that regards, but I would never suggest something as crazy as living car-free for the normal person. But one of the questions asked was about how residents can do their part. And one of the topics that always comes up is solar panels and the cost is always the big thing. I think one of the happy middle grounds where people aren't understanding is with, with the climate change, with rising heat and where, I'm sure, this is my first year living here, so I'm not sure how my bills differ, I have no way of comparing last year's, but I'm sure people are noticing that their electrical bills are rising. And a lot of that has to do with windows. I don't, I don't think people are really understanding that. We talk about home efficiency, most people are, most people have an understanding of insulation and some can even tell you the R-values of their walls and windows. But one of the biggest things that people don't understand is insolation, which is spelled with an O, not a U, which is a completely different term, and really applies to windows more so than walls. And it's the complete opposite, where insulation is keeping everything inside, insolation is specifically about the sun and how it can drive heat through. And no matter how good your windows are at insulating, they're very poor when it comes to insolation. So, but in regards to that, instead of thinking about solar panels, one of the biggest things you can do that's probably even a better cost savings than solar panels is retractable awnings. And the reason for that is that, and, and I'm very clear to not say permanent awnings because permanent awnings are just as bad as no awnings at all. And the reason for that is because of, we have summer and we have winter. In the summer, you want to do your best to keep the sun out. More in particular, you want those rays to not hit inside your home because even though your windows are insulated, the insolation is still getting in. So that means a retractable awning during the summer means you can keep all that heat out, but then during the winter, you just put them up and you get all that heat insulation that helps you save still during the winter. So, and they're much, much less money than solar panels. And you're only looking at doing one side of your house sometimes, most people just need the south side, but if you really want to go all out, you can do the east and the west side of it. So that, that's just the one comment I had for this, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? All right, I'm going to end the public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. We do not have a work session, but we do have a closed session. I need a motion.
I move to consider closed session pursuant to subsection 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman is absent, Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. At this time, we will go into a 10-minute recess, this will give us enough time to clear the chambers. Thank you.